Hey family. I'm trying to get this right, so um. See if you can see the table hopefully, um hopefully you can. Hopefully you can, family. Slight my incense, wait for y'all to come up in here. Oh hey Felissa, hey, 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 hey. I sent you an email. I think I emailed you back, um, I think it was this morning. Cause I had some time this morning to speak to you or whatever, or to talk. Uh but I kind of figured you probably was working. So I said, well, I'll just wait and we can talk a little later. Or maybe we'll do something, um, I'm thinking, well tomorrow I have an event. At this time that I'm gonna be doing, was supposed to be doing Thursday night inside. You saw it, yeah, you was in a meeting, okay, okay, no problem, um. We'll get together, right, and go over it. Uh and like I said, I'm still learning too, girl, I'm still learning too, you know? But I don't have any problem with us talking about it and going over some of the stuff. Um, I still didn't today, cause I'm back working full time too. Um, I didn't really have a big chance on going back and um. You know, reviewing some of the things that she gave us in the last, in the last live. Um, I sent her to the, the live for this tonight to see if she could come. Cause she wanted me to help her with string yard. So she may come over here, I'm not sure, um, depending on if she got it or not, I don't know. Um, but we're gonna go on with our uh shadow work sessions today. Uh, I'm glad you're here, I'm glad you got to make it. Uh, we do these every Wednesday night. Um, I normally start at six thirty, but um. I started doing them at six o'clock now, um, well today rather, I'll probably go back to six thirty next week. But I wanted to get on, okay, I thank you, I watched six or seven videos, but didn't write it down, okay? If I remember it and want to catch up, okay, yeah, that's why I did that shadow work um resources here. So you guys, cause I've been doing these videos and shadow work sessions for years now. This is just not, this is just a sacred space over here, which I love. Cause now it's like, I don't have to be on uh YouTube to do it. I could really be with the people who really wanna tap in and, and learn and, and deep dive. You know, so I'm glad that you're getting back to those videos. I even go back and watch some of my shadow work videos. Because at those moments were the times that I was doing the actual shadow work on those things. But with life, things still start to happen, you know what I mean? So yeah, right, yes, I'm gonna put a little bit of, um, let's see. Okay, I'm glad that you got to watch them, yeah. I thought I had time Monday, but they were taken down before seven. Oh, the lessons, oh, okay, yeah, it's a discipline thing, that's why she's doing that. But we can get together and I can give you um some of the ones that you may have missed, right? Cause we're still on the zodiacs, right? And you wanna get those zodiacs, cause she's saying we got twenty seven, so we got a lot to go through, right? So, yeah, she wants people to be disciplined to get them immediately. That's why when she put them up, I go write and do them, right? Yeah, because I'm, the thing is, she giving us that new lesson. And it's me relearning astrology that I've known. But also, it's allowing me to start to learn, right? And, and go back through revelations and I read revelations and um. You know, learning about the, through revelations, yeah, cause I had never read revelations. So it taught me about the seven si- the seven bowls and the seals and the trumpets and all of that in there. Plus, I actually been watching another master teacher that was talking about some stuff too. Yes, I listened to them Friday, but I'm a realist, so the weekends is big, oh, okay. Makes sense sis, that makes sense, that makes sense, I got you, yeah, I got you, so that makes sense, yeah, okay. So yeah, but you know what, one good thing about this shadow work sessions and about Patreon here? Is that even if nobody comes on, I, hey Tantalus? I always have them recorded for you guys. So you could always go back and watch them either here, cause we've done shadow work sessions here every Wednesday. So you know to come back and just go through the, you know, you have them all here. Or you can um, or you can go to that shadow work resources now that's on this page. And you can, you know, use that and go through the playlists from there. That's why I saved it for y'all guys here, so you'll always have that, so, yeah. I added a page with the description of the books, me too, me too, right? Because Tantalus, um, she, she gave me this really good um screenshot of the, the descriptions of them. And I just compared it and decoded it from revelations. So it was really good the way that I, um, that we found that. And I did make me another paper in my booklet as well with those meanings. Hey Shug, hey y'all, y'all trinkeling on in, y'all trinkeling. We were just talking a little, while y'all was coming, we was just talking about, you know, the lessons and the things like that. Hey sis, you know? So today, I'm gonna head and get started, the others will probably start trinkeling in. Cause I am a little, I'm starting a little early today. Yes, I've been listening to the shadow work videos, yes, why you driving? Yeah, that's what I was about to say, if you right, if you're a realtor, you probably driving a lot. So that's a good option to listen to the shadow work videos, really need notes on the shadow work to reflect, yes. On the shadow work videos, a lot of times, you know, when I was doing those videos on those playlists. I had written down a lot, you know what I'm saying, so yeah, I feel you. But still listen, right, because then you can go back and write it down later, you know, after you've went through, you know what I mean? So, but I'm happy that they're able to be there for you to, you know, be able to go back. Um, these lessons are mind blowing. They are, you know, because we go through a lot of things in our lives. And shadow work sessions, I started as y'all seen with my resources that I posted today. Years maybe, it's, I started my page in like twenty nineteen, so I started shadow work sessions that same year, so. Um, and then I did dealing with Kazzaya, so my shadow work sessions have been going through phases as well. That's why I had to put all of them there. But um, but we learn so much, right? Um, from each other, from our situations, from um, you know, life experiences, right? And none of us are perfect, none of us are perfect. And my shadow work session started out with things that I had been through or things that I needed to work on as well. And um, what I did was I started recording myself, right? Writing, writing, writing in my journals and recording myself, talk about it, learn about it, research about it. And I would give that to the public and say, you, this is what I know. Or this is what I've been through and this is what I've researched, but here you are. This is a push, this is a nudge for you to go within and do your own research and sit with yourself like I've done. That's what shadow work sessions is, it's not to do any shadow work for anyone, it's not to tell anyone anything. It, it, it basically was just a nudge to say, here, I'm going through it too, you know what I mean? Or if I'm, if I haven't even been through it, this is what can, you know, I, I can give to you from me, you know? So get started with yourself, right? And so that's what this turned into, because we started doing it here in our sacred space here over on Patreon. And um, and I love it, I love it, you know? Because it has helped to grow me as well as the collective here, you know? All the girls will tell you, they love shadow work session. Because it gives them the notion to be able to write down some of the things that we discuss here and go back, right? Sit with yourself when you do have the time, but make sure you giving yourself the time too. Cause we get a little busy, but shadow work is, is definitely a continuous thing. You will never not have to have shadow work in your life, because you're always gonna go through life lessons, okay? They have helped me through, yes, right? Good sis, you know, and that's what I'm here for, I'm for y'all, you know what I'm saying? When I come on here, this is for you guys, it's just that over on YouTube is wide open. I'm not monetized for anything over there, so my time, you know, it got to be a lot with time, you know what I'm saying? And so um, I definitely was like, okay, well, I don't want it to be too crazy in reference to monetary. Because I feel like I'm, I've been doing it for, over there for three years from the bottom of my heart, right? And so now over here for a small fee, less than a cup of coffee somewhere, less than, I don't know, a piece of fruit. Cause now everything, eighteen dollars, right? Everything is high, I'm so glad you're grateful, I'm so glad you're grateful. And I'm so glad you guys are here and we're working through these life woes today together. So, that brings me to my topic for today's shadow work session. Which is gonna be about the dark night of the soul, family, okay? So this one is probably gonna be a little rough and tough, right? Um, shadow work is not exciting, of course, right? But hits, I try to make them light, I try not to make them too dibby down. Even though it is a dibby down subject and situations that we do go through. Um, but we also with the live shadow work sessions, we use divination to help us tap in, okay? So, but with this dark, dark night of the soul that I'm gonna talk about a little bit. Before we get into asking the ancestors some things to help us, cause that's the reason why we use the cards. Is, you know, have you felt like you've been through the dark night of the soul? And if you don't really know what the dark night of the soul is, let me kind of explain to you guys what it is. The dark night of the soul, basically, uh, oh, and then family, let me announce this before I get started. Me and Tantalus on her page, energetically Leo, will be doing a podcast that is gonna be centered around. Um, talking about shadow work, okay, or talking about your shadow selves as well. So she's doing a segment over there that I'm gonna join in on, um, the first one. Um, and talk about shadow work, so catch us over there, I'll put the link here. Um, for you guys to catch us over there on, I think it's January the sixth, around seven. And we'll be doing her podcast, and I'm gonna have her back on Key and T. And if you didn't catch Key and T's Sunday, I suggest everybody go watch Key and T. If you over here on Patreon and you miss Key and T on All in the Cards, please go to Key and T. And watch it under the live tab, cause that was a live um podcast, it wasn't a reading, it was a. Well, I kind of did do a reading, but it wasn't really, I guess it was, but it was because the ancestors made me do that that morning. Because of what, what needed to come out to the collective in reference of warnings, okay? So, okay, there, she put it in here, perfect, okay, perfect. So, and, and we'll put the link when we get the uh, uh string yard up. I, so you guys can come, okay, cause we're gonna talk over there about some very, very deep topics, okay? Kind of sort of what we get in over here, you know, inner child traumas and things like that, right? But yes, January sixth at seven. Now, um, like I said, if you didn't catch the warnings, please go to All in the Cards, um, the big channel over on YouTube. And go to the lives, and it's the last live I did, because that was a powerful live. Where the ancestors spoke through me that day, through the cards and through me, okay? Cause I had stuff written, but I didn't even know spirit was gonna make me pull those cards. And, and what came out was just mind blowing, cause that was exactly what I really wanted to talk about. But they gave me even more to tell you guys as warnings, okay? So, I spoke from the heart and um, just let spirit take control, pretty much with that, that, that um, Key and T podcast over there. Okay, so the dark night of the soul, family, we're gonna talk about that today. Because I feel like a lot of us are going through the dark night of the soul in a lot of segments of our lives. Um, and a lot of us, um, yeah, right, it was, right, it was very deep, yeah. Um, I feel like a lot of us have been going through the dark night of the soul. And not really consciously knowing what that really means, right? Or we've experienced before the dark night of the soul. Or um, you may be getting ready to have that type of situation happen in your life. Or you may be able to help someone else, right? Because remember, shadow work is for you to do your own shadow, you know, to, to do your own shadow work. For you to go within, for you to sit with yourself, like Ms. T say, turn the lights off, right? But that's fine, you know, you do your shadow work in the darkness, but also you could do your shadow by just journaling. You could do your shadow work by just meditating, calming your mind, right? But to get to in reference of that shadow, when she states that she means go through the darkness in, in all, right? Even if you do can do it with turning the lights out, some of you may not be that far yet, right, on your journey. And that's fine, but that's also something you have to face, which is a fear, okay? And we're gonna, I'm gonna do a video on fear, I just haven't had the chance to get the time to do it, family. But that is one that I, I really gotta do one on, because a lot of people suffer from it, including myself, okay? But back to the dark night of the soul, so the dark night of the soul is not merely having a bad day. No, that's not what the dark night of the soul is, not even having a bad week. The dark night of the soul is like a long persuasive, very dark experience, okay? All of us have it, um, if you're in a, on a spiritual awakening, um, a spiritual journey, right? Okay, um, if you're experiencing, if you have or have not experienced the dark night of the soul. It is, um, it, you know, it's something in reference of you maybe even feeling a little lost, right? A sense of being lost, not knowing in reference of, you know, what your life will be. Or which way to go, or just feeling like you've lost yourself in a sense, okay? That's one form of the dark night of the soul. Um, even losing someone, mourning someone, um, and not knowing how to get through it. The loss of, um, the dark night of the soul is basically a phase, I'm, a phrase and a phase. Of experiencing a loss, family, okay? Um, and, and, and also is about growth, spiritual growth and awakening. A lot of us have dark nights of the soul because we're shedding the old us, okay? Um, and then shedding that, it's the inability to connect with those that may have been in that old space. That we wanted, once, you know, we're able to sit with these people and do what we used to do. Or sit with family members and do what we used to do. And talk with these people and do what we used to do. And shedding that can make you be in the dark night of the soul, okay? And so the dark night of the soul is a phase, family, it's not a specific day, it's not a specific week. It's about your shadow self, it's about facing your shadow self, going through an awakening. And understanding that everything you thought was true is now of, uh, is now you're being realizing that it's now a facade. It's not reality. And so even that can bring a hit of feeling down and depression and even losing things, you know? Even affecting your health, where some people say they lost their hair during their dark night of the soul. Some people say they've lost all, they've lost their homes, you know, from, from, from being stripped down. You know, for you to be humbled in some cases, that could be a dark night of the soul, right? And so here it says, the dark night of the soul is a natural part of the awakening, the shedding away of the old skin. We feel an inability to connect because the universe is asking us to look more inward. And question ourself, our reality and what is our purpose here, right? A catalyst that triggers the destruction of ego as our subconscious breaks through. The dark night of the soul is everything that irritates us about others that leads us to understanding ourself. And Carl Jung said that, that the dark night of the soul will definitely come during the times. When you least expect your breakthrough in reference of your spiritual growth and your awakening, right? And so, you know, some people say, well, how do you deal with that? Or how does that work for the dark, dark night of the soul? With the dark night of the soul, you have four phases, okay? Um, and the four phases I have here, right, cause I've researched it, you said you're going through that now? Yeah, a lot of us are, that's why I know, yeah, you're right, exactly, mm-hmm, yeah. Yeah, questioning everything about me, questioning everything about the others, questioning, because that's the shed of skin. You understand, that's the shed of the old and you moving into the new. And that, my friend, is not easy, you understand, it's not easy. And no one can make it um, easy for you except for you. Because you have to turn within, you have to sit with yourself, that's facing your fears, that's also the reflection. Because remember, what you receive on the outside of yourself is a reflection of what's within, what's within, okay? So just the same as you, because remember free will, as well as the choices that we've made, okay? Within this human experience comes back by our shadow self as well, the egos, right? Our, our past, right, the things that we love to do that, that really didn't serve our higher selves, right? Um, our addictions, right, all these things. And that's the first phase of the dark night of the soul. The first phase is to identify the crisis, identify who you, what you went through, what you're going through. To identify that this is a problem, right? And the problem is not an outside problem, it's a problem with you, it's a problem here, right? Because some people can't look at their selves in the mirror and turn within and realize that they're the issue. So they point a lot of fingers and they blame, 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 instead of sitting with themselves and saying, no, I am a part of the problem. I am the crisis, right? And so when you're the crisis, then what, right? Have we thought that through? Because sometimes we do a lot of guilt in reference of trauma, in reference of drama, right? In reference of experiences, but, but the whole thing of the matter is the common denominator. And some majority of our situations is what you, okay? So, the awakening would come through that process of us identifying it as a crisis, right? And that crisis could be with family, friends, right, children, lovers, um, death, right? Money issues, crisis can come anyway when you're doing this, when you're going through the dark night of the soul. It's also the universe triggering you and showing you exactly to be stripped down. Like it said here in the book, a shedding of skin, but when you shed of skin, that's you stripping yourself. Stripping yourself naked of everything except for your what emotions, right? Because what is that, what is emotions, that moon energy? That moon energy is what known as the shadow, right? That's the part in, in most of, most cases, people say, oh, well, that's moon energy. Well, moon energy is what, that deception, that, that, that's part of people that, you know, we hide, we're ashamed of, we fear. You know, all those things about yourself that you don't like, you know? But I always tell you guys, embrace that too, but sit with self, right? Sit with self and really, really go through, like one part of what, and I always tell you guys, because you know, I always talk about things. But what I tell you, I'm always gonna bring a solution. But I felt ten times better this week going through, um, and I feel like I've been going through the dark night of the soul. But just realizing it, right, just realizing, going through the phases and coming out of it. Still feeling like a million bucks now, because guess what, I took a piece. And never think that what we learn from other people is not, it's for a reason. And it happens in divine timing, right? So some of us ask, well, why am I just now learning about this, why haven't I thought about this? Because you weren't supposed to, you had to go through it to be able to get to the solution. You can't just go through life and have solutions all the way, that's, that's not what we're here for, we're here for lessons, right? We're here for lessons, okay? And so, that's another reason why some of the things, you know, um, and it's always good to have questions, but also question yourself, okay? So when we question others, question yourself and do those things by writing in your journal. Or by sitting and meditating, or either asking your ancestors as well. But I did some of those things and I've been doing it in the dark and I also been doing it just, you know, by myself, writing, journaling. Getting my emotions out of all the things that I've been going through, you know, emotionally, financially. Um, you know, with family, you know, it just goes on and on and on, right? And so sometimes, um, but you know, the thing that has made me feel the better throughout the dark night of the soul. Has been sitting and really doing the repentance, like she talked about, repentance, right? And this past weekend, I, I, I sat and talked with the ancestors, confessed. As she has advised us, when I say that, just in case everybody that's on here doesn't, is not, um, is not on UT page. Which I thought she was gonna be able to come tonight, cause I was gonna help her with doing some things on here. Um, but I've learned a lot through that process too. And doing research, that that is a part of identifying the crisis. And a part of our spiritual awakening is a part of our spiritual growth, is about knowledge and wisdom, family. So the things that we're learning now, in reference of what we're getting and about our life is on, is for a reason. Well, I only repented that one night and I repented everything and I confessed everything that I could think of. That I had done in my shadow self. And you know what I did, I spoke it, I wrote it in my phone. And the next day, when I got up, cause I was doing it in the middle of the night, right, at the meditation. And I sat there and I'm gonna tell you this, family, let me tell you when you know it's real, right? I haven't been able to, I haven't told anyone this, but um. That night that I did the repentance and everything and confessed all my sins to the ancestors, to, you know, the universe. I just, you know, laid it out on the line to God and just let God know all the things that I was sorry for, I was selfish for. Um, that I realize now, you know what I'm saying, that I was living in my shadow self. I wasn't living in reference of um, my highest good, I was living by um. Not being mindful then, being selfish, only thinking about me. And I wrote all those things in my phone and the next day, I took the things that were in my phone. And I wrote them down on a piece of paper and I did the burning ceremony the next day. In reference of letting that go, but that same night, family, when I've set the phone down and laid there and really thought about it. And the room was dark and I asked for a sign, no lie, all hands on everything in my grandmother's grave. It was an angel I seen come up on my, my, um, my ceiling in the middle of the night. And my devices were flickering, but they weren't even charging. So you can't tell me that spirit and God ain't real and that, that your repentance. And you confessing your sins is a part of your spiritual awakening, it's a part of your dark night of the soul, it's a part of your journey, family. It's a part of you being in your spiritual growth and, and God, God came and, and I'm telling you, you know? And I just felt that and I knew it, I knew it, I knew it. And so, um, and so after that, I felt so good, I felt so good, I felt a relief, right? So sometimes you have to tap in with self and I didn't do that in reference of, I mean, this is the first time I've, I've told anyone that, right? But that's because that's a part of the journey, you have to do things when you do shadow work, it's about you. No one else can do that for you, right? I can only just come here and give y'all the gist and give y'all the nudge. And give y'all the information of what I researched, because I want you guys to send just as well as me, you know? So please do your confessions, do your, do your, um, do your, um, your repentance, right? But also, don't forget to still stick to the script, right? Do your journaling, do your meditation, still do those things, cause we gonna go through a few of these phases and then I'm gonna pull cards. But I just wanted to share that with you guys though, so you can understand the power of repentance as well as confession, right? Because our confessions is to the most high, but they, but he knows our heart, right? And, and to tap in with your higher self and to realize that, you know, it's, it's gonna be okay, it's gonna be okay. This is a part of your spiritual awakening, this is a part of your growth, this is a part of your dark night of the soul. And for some of us, it's different phases and different ways that the dark night of the soul is not. And for some of us, it's different phases and different ways that the dark night of the soul is not the same way for everybody, okay? And everybody may not even understand you going through the dark night of the soul. Because they're, they're, they're not even there, you know what I'm saying? They don't realize the things that you go through on a spiritual journey. A spiritual journey is not a piece of, it's not a piece of cake, it's not fun, okay? Because you're gonna have to strip yourself down and you're gonna have to really sit with yourself. And it doesn't matter what anyone thinks, because this is your journey with you and your spirit team, you see? And so that's the, the extra things that we learn, the wisdom and all that stuff, we put that together, that's to help us ascend. Everything that you do on your spiritual journey, it should be to help you ascend, right? Let's see what y'all talking about. Uh, oh yeah, so you said that, I said, I, I said, you know, I, I just repented that one time and did a burning bowl ceremony. After repenting in my meditation that night, I felt like that was enough. Because I felt like I got that sign, because I asked for a sign, if I was, if, if I was forgiven. I asked for a sign and then that's when I seen that in the middle of the night, no lie, with green light. Green is the heart chakra, right?
Yeah, recognition and acknowledgement for me has me moving forward.
Good, good, Melissa. I confess to known and unknown, right? And the unknown comes to me, so I, um, confess, oh, I missed some stuff and repent. Okay, now that's another thing too. I just, I didn't, I, I confess to the things that were known. That I knew I needed to repent for and confess, um, confess. Now, in reference of the unknown, I speak that every day, right? So I just feel like that's a part of that, because if it's unknown, I can't be very specific to write it down. Yes, I could write that also, which I probably will add that to my journal. So that's a good idea. I love when you guys come back with stuff, because I'm learning too, right? So we learning together, so I will add that, Melissa, thank you. Um, but I was so specific about things that I knew that I needed to confess and, and, um, and repent for. And those things are not, you know, it's things that you may have been ashamed of. You may have known that wasn't right, you may have liked, these are the things, family, okay? It's just saying, you did, I did mine, but I feel as if I need to do it again. Do it again, sis. If you feel like you need to do it again, do it again. Because then that's, that's your, yo, that's your shadow self telling you to do it again. I mean, that's your higher self telling you to do it again. So if your higher self is telling you to do it again, do it again, okay? Ain't nothing wrong with that, because if you wanna repent or if you wanna confess, maybe it wasn't, maybe you didn't get a sign. Maybe you feel like it's, it hasn't been heard, you know what I'm saying? But for me, the reason why I feel like that was sign sealed and delivered, because I asked for a sign and I feel like I got it. I also got another sign right after that in the cards where spirits spoke to me in reference of that. So I, I do feel like I got a sign, right? So, we send daily even in thought, right?
That's true, that's true. Yes, that's true, Melissa.
So the unknown is a part of that, so you're saying, that makes sense.
Yeah, I asked for forgiveness for the things I may do unknowingly and for grace for the future. That's a good one too.
And see, that, these are right here, when people come back and look at the shadow work sessions here on Patreon, because you know, these are private. Um, they'll be able to use what you guys are saying and offering advice and how you do yours and how I do mine. And they can cultivate, you, you guys can even come back here and cultivate altogether how you wanna do yours, you know what I'm saying? Or, um, you know, or, and that's a part of identifying the crisis. Or identify, and it's also a part of shattered belief systems, okay? So that's the next phase we gonna get into. Let's get into that next, so we can pull cards and ask the ancestors for advice on dark night of the soul. Because I do wanna do that, okay? But the second phase, see, these are the phases, family. Let me see if I can put it up there good, so you guys can see. The first one is to identify the crisis. The second one is to shatter, is to, is, is about shattered belief systems. Now, when they, when he said, when they said that in the article about the second phase being a shattered belief system. That's because a lot of us do have belief systems that back then, when we were, I mean, well, or if you still sinning every day. True, but hopefully not sinning every day like, you know, something crazy every day. Because you should be on a spiritual journey where you're not doing that, or you're getting far away from it as possible, okay? But, um, but your shattered beliefs, right? Um, your belief systems, right? So the shattered beliefs, okay, let's think about it. Holidays, right? So some of us that have been on our journeys, um, now we don't celebrate the holidays, because now we're conscious, right? Of what it really truly meant, but our beliefs in the past with family, because of what we have been brought up on. Programmed with, those belief systems were completely different than what you are doing now in your spiritual journey, I'm sure for some of you. Some of you, you wouldn't dare do some of the things that you did when you were in your twenties or your thirties or when you wasn't on a spiritual journey. I know that's me. So those are shattered belief systems, okay? That's you coming out of something that you once was, you know, once believed, right? And then I wanted to mention this, when you think of the word, but get away from belief. Because that's what the guys was talking about in the video that I posted for you guys. And I love that they said that, that was amazing, that when you look at the word believe and believe. Don't believe and believe, have believes, beliefs and believe everything, family. Know the truth, because believe has the word lie in it and believe has the word lie in it. So those things can be lies, just like religion, right? Just like, um, you know, you may believe something is, is this way, but is it really facts or truth to it? So be careful on belief and believes. I love that when they said that, because that, that spoke to me a lot, you know what I mean? And, and that really resonates with me in reference of shattered belief systems. That's when you're shattering things that you believe, because get, get this. When he said that, the reason why it resonated so much with me is because everything that I had a belief with before. And everything I believed wound up being a lie. And we're realizing it now, right? We're realizing it now, more than, more than enough, you're seeing it with, just with, with us going through the lessons, right?
Um, I definitely feel as if this new year, I haven't really digged in, right?
Me too. Same. I didn't burn anything though. I was afraid I'd be out of order by burning, so I did it through meditation. No, actually burning it is you release, relieving, releasing, uh, releasing it is burning it. It's like a burning bowl ceremony, right? So when we do the burning bowl ceremonies with full moons and so forth, you know, when you burn things, it's about banishing, it's about removing it. It's about letting it go. So you wanna do those things for those things that you feel you want to repent for or you wanna release. Because repentance is that, you're releasing it, you're repenting, right? Repentance is to push away, you know, out of your system, out of your, um, consciousness, right? So those are the things that you wanna do, so yeah, yeah. So, and you know what, sis? I didn't do it that same night, like I did it through meditation too, that night in the dark, in the room, right? And like I said, it was in the middle of the night and then I was still laying there, you know, and I put it in my phone. Because I didn't wanna forget what I had repented for and confessed to, right? Uh, because I knew I wanted to do a burning bowl, um, so it, so it is like a process in reference of, you know, going through, doing these things. You know, but you can still go back and, you know, write that down, burn it and do what you wanna do.
Man, what I'm so many capacities, man, what I'm so many capacities, I'm, I'm in so many capacities.
Right, and, and so am I, you know what I'm saying? But it's, it's a process, you're not gonna be able to do everything in one setting, you know what I'm saying? Like Tensha said, do we need to do a day? I don't think daily, but give yourself time, maybe do it once a week, like you do your shadow work, you know what I'm saying? Maybe get in the habit of doing it once a week, you know, maybe get in the, you know, if you feel like it's, if you feel like you have that much stuff, you wanna break it out. I feel like I have, I feel like we say the unknown as well as the specifics on what you really, really know has been bothering you. Or you really know you was wrong about, or what you really feel like you couldn't let go or what. You know, these are the things that I'm, I'm referring to, that you probably want to take a few times to do it over a certain period of time. Not all at once, you know, for some of us, right? So like I said, it's not no set certain way, right? It's not no set certain way, just like it's not no set certain way on shadow work, right? It's not no set certain way, family. It's about you though, it's about you, how you gonna relieve it, right?
It's a process to discard old beliefs, right?
It is. It is a process in reference of, uh, discarding old beliefs. But one thing about it, you know, um. Do take heed and be mindful, that's all I'm saying. Because some people can say that, but then in a process, some people feel like the process may take ten years. And, you know, I feel like that's more or less excuses, right? So you have to, you have to be accountable, put it like that, because when you get the truth and the facts. When you get the truth and the facts, that's something different, that shifts your whole being, shifts your whole consciousness. Especially if one plus one equals two and you've been told one plus one equals three and four and five, right? All your life, you gotta come back down to the truth. So yes, it is a process, but sometimes the process is shrunk, because me, I'm a person that likes to function off of truth. And me, I'm also a person that I like to reprogram myself, yes, and I know it is a process, but I'm chirping at it constantly. So I'm gonna change my way of thinking, even though, you know, some people say, oh, well, stuff is always changing, it's always, um. Yeah, but your core beliefs is something that you have to really, really work on at the end of the day. Everything is gonna constantly change, it's the inevitable, this is, this is what it is, earth always changes, right? Um, but to have deception and to live a lie all of your life, that is a process to come out of, right? It's kinda like being, having an addiction, it's a process, just like you said. It's, it's, it, it takes, it is a process to discard a belief, but you know, it's the same like an addiction. Like if somebody still tries to, you know, get off of drugs after ten years and they're still doing it day to day to day to day. But they're saying they're gonna get off of it, that's, that's not a process, that's you still being addicted to it, that's you still believing that. You see what I'm saying? So, um, that's what I mean. So we have to look at those, um, beliefs, we need to really sit with your belief systems and shatter those belief systems. One by one by one by one to come out of some of these things that, you know. The dark night of the soul comes because it's been triggered by something that no longer serves you through your spiritual awakening, family. That's the part of a dark night of the soul, so it's not gonna be easy and it's not gonna feel good, okay? Um, phase three, withdrawing, right? All of us probably go through this in the dark night of the soul and don't even realize that. When we realize that things are not the way we really, really expected it to be, that's disappointment, that's fear. That's ego, that's shame, that's all kinds of things, family, right? All those emotions, right? That flare up. And so withdrawing, withdrawing, would you say withdrawing? Or would you say solitude or isolation? I would say more or less, um, I would say more or less, uh, withdrawing. It says to recluse, pull back, the dark night is there for a reason, it's a part of your growth. It's the time for inquiry, most of our lives we spend in inquiry. That is looking at that world outside of us. We are distracted daily by the glamour and the glitz of life, but now it's time to look within, it's time to inquire. So try to avoid social commitments, get off the phone, look within as much as possible and be gentle and kind and quiet with yourself, okay? That's how we would withdraw, okay? Going through that phase, alright? A part of that is being in solitude, stillness and meditation, family. Uh, but as this person that I was reading this article, um, that really, really tapped, being his name is Tom Corin. He really gave a good explanation of the dark night of the soul and some solutions. As we have identified the dark night of the soul and what it really truly is, it's a process that we go through many times. It's like a, um, evolution, you know, path, you know? As we, um, we going through, we're peeling back all these different layers that we no longer like of ourselves. And we no longer like of others and we trying to realize, how did I get here? You know, why is it that I feel this way? Why is it that I'm not really caring or really feeling like doing nothing? I don't even really wanna be dealing with these people no more, I really don't even care what they do, I don't wanna be around them. I don't even wanna be in this situation, I don't wanna work here anymore. I really don't like this job anymore, because it really doesn't serve me. I really wish I could be doing spiritual stuff all day long. I know I go through that on a, on a continuous basis, okay? So these are some of the things you could think of while you're going through and while you're having this enlightenment, right? Sometimes enlightenment could be, um, some people look at it as being like a destructive process, but it's really not, it's just enlightenment. It's, it's the truth. All sounds like me the past. Okay, for real, me too. And so that's why I always bring y'all. I always bring y'all, you know, I'm always gonna bring y'all the shadow work that I go through as well, right? So a lot of you guys, because we're on the same frequency, we on the same vibration, we're within the same energy fields. We're gonna be feeling the same energy, family, okay? Hence why Tensha said that, right? And so the enlightenment is crumbling away the untruth, family, okay? The enlightenment, let me repeat that, the enlightenment is crumbling the untruth, the lie, the belief. The bligh, okay? It is the complete eradication of everything we imagine to be true. A lot of us are going through that now. With a spiritual awakening that can take you into the dark night of the soul, because now you wanna tell everyone around you. You wanna let everyone know, you start to look at everything like, this is when people go into the psychosis, right? The psychotic psychosis, when you starting to really realize that everything has been a part of, uh. Of the untruth of the program, right? What you said, Melissa, I was going to say, that's me quitting every day, right? Exactly, right? And so, um, as each conditioned action, thought, emotional pattern is dissolved, remo- and removed from our being. You can experience our identi- our identity crisis. Yeah, you could definitely go through our identity crisis, because I know that's when some of us change the way we feel, the way we look. Some of us wanna strip ourselves down of everything that no longer is natural, you know what I'm saying? That's when some of us go through that. Some of us have these things naturally to happen to us, so we can actually go through the dark night of the soul. It's a part of your spiritual awakening when you don't even realize, you see? And it mainly happens by the things that you really felt you had to have at one point in your life. You really felt like you had to have this job, you really felt like you had to have this money, you really felt you had to have this friend. You really felt you had to have this lover, when in actuality, you really don't have to have none of that. All you gotta have is your connection to the most high in yourself and now you probably realize that. And now you probably realize that every damn thing you see, you heard, you hear and you don't envision has been actually a lie. Has been to put you in a state of psychosis, a state of, um. I don't know how to even, I don't know, I, it's, it's just, I don't know, it's just like to put you into this lie, right? And so, you know, it's, it's, it starts to become a sense of loss from what you have become accustomed to. It's a lonely, dark, hollow feeling, a feeling of being lost and empty at times. It's a time where you question everything and have no idea who you are anymore. Some of us are there, some of us do, you, you know, you have to ask yourself, do you recall ever going through this or do you feel this way, right? In the midst of this, this is a transitional point, family, okay? From one level to the next, sometimes transitioning from one point to the next isn't gonna feel great. It's not gonna be easy and the spiritual journey is that way, especially when you're coming out of the phase of behind your eyes being covered. And now you were seeing with your two eyes, but now you're seeing with your third eye. And now you're realizing the things that other people can't see, can't feel, you, you, all your clairs are being awakening. Now you're really realizing your empathic, your psychic abilities are heightening, because now you're tapping into your actual power. because now you're tapping into your actual power. And so sometimes, family, that can push you in the dark night of the soul. You understand? And so how do we resolve those things? Well, we turn within, right? We withdraw, like I told you a few minutes ago, going through the phase of withdrawing, right? Um, but the last phase is the transformation as well, right? And so the withdrawal, right? Um, the meditation, right? The uh even sleep, family, even sleep, right? Some of us, it's about you sleeping to recharge your mind, cuz some of us, like me, I know I do a lot of studying lately, right? Cuz I, once you understand and start realizing and waking up, as they say, right? And you're no longer blinded and one thing runs to another and 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 you're just like right? And so at this point, you gotta recharge, you gotta recharge, you gotta get your mind right first. Some of that is meditation, some of that is prayer, but some of that is you actually getting some rest. A lot of that is your diet, okay? Make sure you're not eating crazy, okay? Make sure you're not eating crazy. Get you some good food. I just started back working out. Yeah, you're mentally drained, and if you're mentally drained, a lot of us, because you're going through that dark night of the soul, you wanna emotionally eat, you wanna emotionally drink. Some of you wanna emotionally smoke, you know, get back to these addictions and then you right back to square one. This dark night of the soul is to push you past that point. Me, I haven't, you know, thank God, smoked weed in over two, three months, right? Well, without it mixing, right? Cuz I was doing smoke blends with mixing it and then I came off of it, right? So, but then going back, right? Having that, that relax and going back, you know what I mean? And I'm not ashamed to say it, you know? But um, but I feel good, you know what I'm saying? I, I know, and it's been since I've been not working, which started in like September, right? And so going through that whole segment of September all the way till now, I feel so much better, I'm able to repent. I asked God, I asked the ancestors, take it away, you know, any addictions, any, any, you know, just reflecting, family, reflect, you know? And be able to speak it, don't be ashamed, that shit, people have their own vices too. There is no judgment here, not in our sacred space. You let that be somewhere else, right? And so I'm open with you guys, and so being clear, you know, being clear and being able to go through these things, being able to say that God stripped me of some things, but showed me, gave me that dark night of the soul, and what do I do? I withdrawn, I went into so- solitude, I went into isolation, right? Where you just need to be by yourself, you need to be in meditation, you need to be in the prayer, you need to confess, you need to do all these things, right? And so these are the things that I'm telling you in reference of the dark night of the soul. Some of you going through it and didn't even realize you're going through the dark night of the soul, okay? So that's why I wanted to bring this to Shadow Work Sessions today. One thing he said here, that I'mma read to you guys, and then we're gonna get to pulling cards, cuz I'm almost at the hour. It is best to learn to silence the faculties and to cause them to be still. So there is a moment where you need to be still, family, you have to. It's, you have to, there's no way around it. You hear what I'm saying? Who I am, what I do want, what I do like, why is my voice like this? I mean, everything I question, right? Right? That's a part of the dark night of the soul. I think my voice has changed the past few years. Mine has definitely. Facts, everything extremely heightened, yes, it has, and yes, mentally drained, yes. And when you feel like that, meditation, prayer, um, withdrawal, right? Go in solitude, nourish your body and your brain with some veggies and some, you know, um, water. Fast, we gotta get to our fasting, our fasting, we gotta fast, family. Um, I'm thinking after Christmas, the first of the year, we're gonna do us a fast, okay? Let's, let's do us a fast as a family and um, reset, right? Reset our bodies, okay? I started working out, I'm doing three days a week, gonna work myself up, you know what I'm saying? Cuz y'all know I never really loved working out, but I've created me a little gym in my house. So now I got my weights, I got my, my ball, I got my yoga mat, and I got my treadmill, so I'm trying, I'm trying, family. I did thirty minutes each day, starting since Tuesday, so yesterday, today, and then tomorrow, and then I'll get back to it next week. So next week is the ending of December, so let's say I'll put something, I'll post something. We'll have our lives or whatever, and we're gonna do a fast. Yeah, we need to do our fast, yeah, cuz me, you know, me intentions beyond the fastest, I love doing my fastest, and it resets your body, it really does. So we can do that, and if you can't do it, try. Cuz you putting that in your mind that I can't, I can't, I can't. You can do it, okay? So try to let go, if, listen, this one thing I wanted to tell you guys about, you know, going through the dark night of the soul, and one thing about that too, when we talked about the part about nourishing our body through the transformation phase, right? If you can't fast, try to let go of something that you definitely feel like you could never let go of, like sugar, right? Start with something small, start with rice, start with bread, right? Start with something that you feel like you have to have. Let that go, that's the sacrifice. That's the sacrifice, that's the transformation, okay? So start small, if you can't do a full fast, okay? So that's what I tell you to do, or I ask you to do. And the last thing that they talked about was seeking knowledge, seeking knowledge, seeking counsel, right? The dark night of the soul is definitely um, about what you are becoming, okay? Because remember, you go through the darkness in reference of the light. The darkness is the best part, family. That's what we have backwards. The darkness is the best part for you to realize and to face your fears and to really know who you are. That's what the shadow is, that's why I say embrace your shadow, don't shy from it. The shadow is you too, that's why I always tell you guys I'm Keshan, cuz I am, right? I'm, that's the same person. It's just two segments of myself, it's the yin and the yang, like I'm wearing on my nails, family, right? The yin and the yang. It's the light and the dark, that's been me, that I, you know what? I feel like since Libra season, when I did put that up, that I've been going through the dark night of the soul, okay? Confessions, okay? But yeah, so yes, I used to take away something I liked, right? Take away something you like if you can't fast, right? And so, you know, some of you can fast though, and if some of you can fast, then I feel like you can take, you know, one or two days or three days, however long you wanna take to fast. You know, if you can't do a whole day of fasting, maybe do half a day, maybe do, you know, nothing up until a certain hour, which is that intermediate fasting, right? There's nothing wrong with that. You're still fasting, and spiritual fasting is about you meditating, it's about you sacrificing your meal and, and letting the most high in your ancestors know that this is something that I can sacrifice because of what you have sacrificed for me, right? And help me with in life, right? So those were the phases of the dark night of the soul, family, so that was, I'll go through the phases and then we'll pull some cards, the phases of the dark night of the soul is to identify the crisis. The crisis is you, what it, what are the traumas you went through? Some of us have gone through PTSD and don't even realize it, you know? Cuz that's a crisis within you, the trauma that you've been through. Some of you been through so much trauma, you are the, the, the person going through PTSD. It doesn't have to be just, you think of that when you say about soldiers and people like that. You have been a soldier, you have been a warrior through it all, through some experiences, hearing this human experience. So a lot of you have to identify the crisis, a lot of you have to shatter your belief systems. The things that you once believed, you have to shed yourself of those things. You have to shed yourself of not only belief systems, but people, places and things. Withdrawing is the next phase. That withdrawal is you withdrawing yourself. It's just like going through a withdrawal after you've let go of an addiction, it's the same instance. Letting go of the lies, you come into reality, right? The dark night of the soul. And really research this for yourself as well, don't go by me, do your own due diligence, right? And really sit with yourself and, and, and really decide, what is it that I went through that is really like me? Am I in the dark night of the soul? And then some of you probably gonna say, you know what, I am going through the dark night of the soul. Or I have been through the dark night of the soul, right? And so number four is the last phase, which is the transformation. And some of us stay in that phase for a very long time. Because like us, we realize we are the crisis, that we have to do the shadow work, especially if you're here doing it, right? We understand the situation is us as the crisis or the things that we went through. And we have shattered beliefs because we've awakened, right? And a lot of us have already went through the withdrawal because we have already put ourselves in solitude. Some of us don't even do nothing with other people, some of us don't have friends. Don't leave the house, that's a form of solitude, okay? Isolation, right? Because you don't want to get your energy mixed in with some energy and other people and other things that can take you to a whole nother place, that's gonna mess with your frequency and your vibration and your energy. That's called protecting your energy, but that's also a form of withdrawal within the dark night of the soul phases, okay? And then transformation, transformation is what we all probably are going through, which is transforming and changing. Going through the changes, um, dealing with the changes, right? And so a lot of us have to go through that to really realize, listen, you gotta change, cuz there's no way to stay the same and get the, the, a different result, family, in your spiritual journey, right? That's a part of insanity, when you think you're gonna be able to stay the same. You're not. You're not, and God will humble you, right? Very quickly, um, to show you that you're living in the, a physical, the, the, the physical, the three D, right? And there's other realms to this life, this thing called life, family, right? So I just wanna pull a few cards and see what spirit tells us about the dark night of the soul. If you feel like you're in the dark night of the soul, as I do, um, in some phases of it, right? I feel like I've had a major dark night of the soul, and the dark night of the soul sometimes comes as tower moments. So for some of you, the dark night of the soul has come as a, as a tower moment in your life. Whether that's a death, whether that's you shedding yourself, whether that's you realizing you're no longer who you used to be. Whether you're questioning yourself, you know, because you don't recognize yourself, you feel lost. That's tower moments, but those are tower moments with you. Sometimes tower moments don't happen based off of something outside of you, family. Cuz you are the crisis, okay? So Spirit, ancestors, what can you give us in reference of us going through the dark night of the soul? What message, what message can you bring through to the collective today that see and hears me, the sound of my voice? Um, and please protect us while we're going to the, the oracle in reference of the messages and the answers we speak. What is it that we need to know around the dark night of the soul for those that are here? Going through the dark night of the soul, what is it that you want us to know? Please bring through messages for those here in reference of the dark night of the soul. Us that are going through, we need clarity, answers to spirit found for the dark night of the soul, what is it that you can tell us? Thank you, Spirit. Spirit said, because I'm opening in your third eye chakra, cuz now you can see. See that? See that? Can't tell me that spirit ain't real. Spirit said, your third eye chakra. And some of us, it's in reference of us working on this root chakra, which is Saturn energy, see? The discipline, the restrictions, the karma. It's been all through this energy, family, the root chakra. And also, see how Spirit gave us chakras? When I asked, what is it that we needed to know around the, the, the um, dark night of the soul? Spirit said, you need to work with your, 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 um, work on your root chakra and your third eye chakra. When it's, when you're dealing with your dark, when you're dealing with the dark night of the soul, the root chakra is definitely Saturn energy, okay? The third eye is you awakening, that's the awakening, the Kundalini energy that's within, right? And Spirit said, you having the dark night of the soul because you going from the one to the six, to get to the seven, you see? And so you put these two together, that brings the seven. The first chakra is the root chakra, family, which is what you should be working on. Something is maybe out of balance with your root chakra, which has pushed you into the dark night of the soul, right? Which is about your security, your stability, right? Your root chakra, about something being restricted in your life, about discipline, about structure in your life, somewhere, this has been gotten out of balance. And so Spirit said for you to go, starting with phase one, is the root chakra, you see that? To go towards your third eye, the awakening. The Kundalini energy, the, the third eye, so you can see. Not with the two eyes, but with the eye in the middle of your head, your pineal gland, right? Yeah. So that's Spirit talking to us, letting us know, these are the two chakras. If you don't know, and if you're going through the third, I mean, the dark night of the soul, this is your clue, this is your key of what you need to concentrate on at this moment. Maybe work with your root chakra, um, not maybe, but do, right? And work in reference of your third eye, okay? Your root chakra is where you should start. You use red crystals, you wear red. You work with Saturn energy, that's that discipline, that's the karma. Cuz the, some of us going through the dark night of the soul because of karma. Because of uh, of karmic situations that are happening, not just in this lifetime, but in other lifetimes as well. We learn about that too, right? And so Spirit wants us to know that, that's why we got chakras that came out, family, not words, not messages. We got chakras in reference of the dark night of the soul. So take heed and work with these chakras, as well as the third eye, which is an indigo, right? So you guys already know over here how to work with your chakras, how to get in alignment, right? To get from the one, right? To get from the one to the six. And put these together, you master to the seven, you see? You master to the seven, which is your crown, your ore ring, alright? And so that's what Spirit wants you to know out of the message that we had in reference of the dark night of the soul. And I'm definitely gonna tap back in with my root chakra, do some things Saturn, which is, we do these things by mantras, affirmations, crystals, um, Saturn, which is on Saturday, right? Do some things on Saturday, look at, Miss T just um, showed you guys a lot of things about the planet. So now you can research the planet. I know about Saturn, cuz I've been working with Saturn. Cuz I know that I'm going through a karmic situation with the dark night of the soul, so the root chakra makes sense to me. Spirit's still telling me, gotta work with the root chakra, okay? And that I've been working, or either this is the message for someone who's going through the dark night of the soul, who doesn't know to start with the root chakra and to get to the third eye. But I also feel like this message is, since I have been working on my uh, root chakra, I am having an awakening and putting these together are going to get to the crown chakra, being in alignment, see? And so that is the message, family, in reference of what we are um, to do, right? We asked for that uh, message from the most high in our ancestors through the divination of cards, and Spirit gave it to us in reference of the dark night of the soul, family. Tap in, you know, cuz you guys are having the awakening, or the awakening is happening, and it's Spirit telling you the awakening is going to happen, but it starts with the root chakra. Okay? So that's what I have for you guys for the dark night of the soul, Shadow Work Sessions. Hopefully you guys were able to take a lot of stuff away from this Shadow Work Session today. Come back and watch it, write stuff down about the phases, about what you need to do. We got some solutions in there, right? Eating, meditating, solitude, praying. Did a lot of explanation throughout the dark night of the soul, we talked about the dark night of the soul. We talked about, you know, our experiences through the dark night of the soul. A lot of us are going through some dark night of souls and, and, and don't get it twisted. The dark night of the soul is not just a one-time thing, you can go through the dark night of the soul a few times in your life, okay? So, you know, it's about your spiritual growth and your spiritual awakening, and you're gonna always wanna grow, right? Because if you don't grow, you're gonna die, okay? So I love you guys. No problem, sis, no problem, no problem. Love and blessings back to you, peace and blessings. Yes, to all of you guys, through the darkness to the light. I love you guys, and remember, it's what? It's all in these cards, family, it's all in these cards. I'll see you guys in the next Shadow Work Sessions. Tomorrow, we're doing the Winter Solstice Zoom. I resent the, the, the Zoom for those who purchased the Winter Solstice box. Tomorrow, we're doing the Winter Solstice Zoom. I resent the, the, the Zoom for those who purchased the Winter Solstice box. Um, and we will be on that live, so tomorrow, Thursday night insight might be after, or I may just cancel it. I haven't decided yet, so I'll get with you guys and let you know, alright? Alright, no problem, sis, I'll see you guys in the next live. Bye-bye.